The town council meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We had a good crowd here tonight. Appreciate everyone coming by. Must be something on the agenda you are interested in, I would think. All right, approval of minutes. You all have had a chance to take a look at them. Any corrections or additions? Then they stand approved. Report of town manager.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, members of council. Just one administrative note. Just want to remind everybody that the town follows the annual holiday schedule posted by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And between now and the next meeting of council, there are two holidays during which town offices will be closed. First is actually election day, it's a holiday, on Tuesday, November 4th. The other is Veterans Day on Tuesday, November the 11th. One other thing, I'm going to request a revision to the agenda when we get to that point, related to the dedication ceremony for the Bedford-Vietnam Veterans Memorial, which will take place in front of the courthouse on Saturday, November 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Staff's been working with the organizers for that, through the process for that. While we advise that, you know, it can be covered administratively, the organizers have requested a formal street closure and acknowledgement by town council, and we would like to do that for them tonight, so I'll be requesting that when we get to that point. And last thing I have is I'm going to turn it over to Chief Jim Moore to recognize some of our very special colleagues.
Good evening, everybody. We've had a lot of movement around the police department and just getting a little bit behind recognizing a few individuals. So first want to introduce somebody that you already know well, Captain Steven Swain. Steven's been in law enforcement for over 20 years, including about five and a half here. And I promoted him back to captain in July. And Steven's the kind of leader that I'm looking for. He loves the town. He's committed to community policing and our officers and helping everybody be their best. So I'm proud to have him as part of this executive staff. Next, I want to introduce Officer Sabri Parker. Sabri, as some of you all know, it takes us over a year to get somebody in the door, background, interviews, hiring process, police academy, and off-of-field training. So Sabri just recently finished 23 weeks of police academy and 12 weeks of FTO. She actually got blessed off by some of our training sergeants and FTOs to be out on her own just a couple of weeks ago. So one of the things about her is she had a knee injury in the academy and suffered her way through and made it through with flying colors, so I'm really proud of her. Another quick thing about her is she's a local lady and she worked in a convenience store and a lot of our officers got to know her over time and were so impressed with her, they heavily recruited her. And once her five-year-old son recommended it, she went ahead and applied. Proud to have her on board as well. At the Salem Civic Center today, we just swore in to, we just graduated two brand-new officers, and that would be Officer Whitney Arnie and Officer Josh Diedrich. Josh brought his wife Meredith here as well. But they just finished the 23 weeks of the police academy and they'll be starting the FTO process soon. Josh was the all-time highest firearms score at the academy there. And interesting thing about Whitney that I admire is she has a baby one month and then gets in pretty good shape and starts the academy the next month. I really admire the fact she took that out and they're going to be a really good representative for us and glad to have them onboard. Last but not least, we have two recruits. And I'm constantly impressed with the quality of the people that are applying to work here in Bedford. And that would be recruit Christian Dillard and recruit Marcus Olson. Christian is a former Division One track athlete and Division One track coach. And Olson was a pharmacy tech at CVS and speaks several different languages, so he's a whole lot smarter than me. So anyway, proud to have all these people aboard and just wanted to introduce them to you.
So Chief. So Chief, I think it's safe to say that if he gets upset, he could be speaking to you in another language and you would not know.
Absolutely. No, every one of these people make me look good because they're all a whole lot smarter than me and better than me in different things.
Well, you have touched everything, just like we like to hear. You've said leadership, dedication, commitment, and they like the town. So that's all we can ask.
Well, all the surprises I've had since being here have been pleasant surprises. Pinch myself every morning when I wake up.
Yes, keep up the good work and we thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, appearances before council, I have a few. I will say I see several to speak on the zoning. I would encourage you all to wait for the public hearing for that if it's okay. But the rest I will call in order and you can come up and tell us what is on your mind. Leslie Mahaffey, come up, state your name and where you live.
Leslie Mahaffey, 1517 Woodland Road here in town. Yesterday, I sent all of you an email. Thank you for taking the time to read that. I did get one response that I was very thankful for. This has to do with the formal, the old business about the street that amended Section 227. I am opposed to that. I think that it is pertinent that with the responsibilities that each of you have here on council, that you be available at least twice a month. I know the next two months, November and December, there are adjustments made because of specific holidays and you'll only be here once a month. Understand that. But come January, I certainly hope that you will continue with your two meetings per month. If you change it different from what the Bedford County Board of Supervisors has so that us people that live in town and pay real estate taxes to the county as well as here in town, and if we want to be able to attend a board of supervisors' meeting, maybe you could change that from the second and fourth to the first and third Tuesday, if you want to keep it on Tuesday, or do it a different time of the week. I'm a firm believer in getting back to basics. You know, you're, for how many years? I went and looked, I actually pulled up the town code and looked at that section and it's been out there for many, many years. So I hope that you do continue with that. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next is Jennifer Cone.
Hi, Jennifer Cone, 3674 Forest Road. Also speaking against moving the council to once a month. I spoke on this briefly at the last meeting when it was considered. I will just reiterate one of those points, which is in that in our current political era of animosity, this is important. It's important for people to see each other face-to-face and not on a screen. And we're much kinder to each other when we're actually looking at each other face-to-face. We're a small town and the logistics associated with meeting twice a month are not ones that cannot be overcome. I would hope that if you do take a roll call vote today, that you each take a moment to explain your votes. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, John Hayden.
Hello, council, John Hayden, 1013 Wendy Ridge Drive. I'm here to speak about the tree lighting. I know we already got everything approved. We do appreciate you all for allowing us to extend the perimeter for the tree lighting. I'm here today to ask for the funds that we had received last year. The funds was a great help. It definitely took a lot of stress off of planning the tree lighting event. We're looking to expand the event this year for more entertainment for the children. So like I said, we do appreciate you all for, you know, approving the extension. Again, I'm here to just ask for the funds again, like we spoke about last year. I sat down with Mayor and Mr. Warner and we were able to, you know, come up with a solution. And again, the solution did work and we do appreciate that and we hope that you all will consider that for this year as well.
Thank you. Board, do we need to do anything on that or is it just?
I don't know. If there's council actions necessarily next month, I'll let you know, but I think we could probably look within the budget to see what we can do. And we will report that.
Yep, everybody okay with that? All right, Cynthia Gano, come on up.
Hello, Cynthia Gano, 1621 Kingston Circle, Bedford. I want to thank you for your community service and representing us all on council, because it's not an easy job and I understand that. But community representation is really the point of your council service. So I'm just speaking that decreasing the meetings to, from two meetings a month to only one is kind of defeating the reason you were elected to council. Business needs to be conducted in public, not in work sessions and not by staff. And so we need this community involvement of having open council meetings that people can attend. Many items often can come up in between meetings and so if we reduce the only having once a month meetings, things can kind of fall between the cracks when they need attention and they would have to wait as well. And like things like recommendations from the planning commission, if they have to wait even longer before they get, come before council, that's not a great thing for business growth and development in our community, EDA actions, you know, you put those things off. So I think that we really need to have these twice monthly council meetings. And just kind of along those lines, if you would vote to reduce your meetings to once a month, I think you should also consider reducing your salary. Planning commission members, EDA members all meet monthly and, you know, we don't get paid. So, you know, I do think, you know, if you're going to reduce your amount of service, then you should also reduce your salary to go along with it. But I do appreciate your service and thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, Sam. Yeah. Oh, you wanted to speak on the zoning. Yeah, just, I'm sorry, just wait for the public hearing. Okay. All right, Andy Long.
Good evening, Andy Long, 1512 Clearview Road. I just wanted to add my voice to the others that have already expressed their opposition to going from two meetings a month down to one meeting a month. I believe it's important for the residents to have the opportunity to see you, speak with you, engage in dialogue, communication, collaboration on all of the issues that affect the town and that affect all the residents and the citizens who live here in town. I am, well, I want to commend you also, first of all, for trying to resolve the issue when the board of supervisors switched their town meetings so that they conflicted with the town council meetings and recognize that there are people in the town and in the county who would like to participate in both. And so I think it's important to address that aspect. But somehow, when that first discussion came up, suddenly it was conflated with also a reduction from twice a month to once a month. And so to me, that's a separate topic and one that should not be conflated with moving the days of the meetings. And that is the part that I join the others in opposing a reduction of the days. I also acknowledge, as Leslie did, that there may be adjustments for November and December specifically because of the holidays. But in all cases, the purpose of the town council meetings is really to provide an opportunity for open communication between the citizens and our elected representatives and we hope that you will continue to provide those opportunities twice a month. We do appreciate your service to the town and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Bill Mosley, where are you?
Excuse me, my name is Bill Mosley, 618 Westview Avenue, Bedford. I spoke last time about the same topic, about the notion of reducing meetings from twice to once a month. And I mentioned this last night and I kind of ingest, but I'm going to mention it again. Once again, the agenda came out saying that this is to amend Section 2.27 of Town Code. Who knows what that is? Nobody knows what that is. Is it that difficult to print an agenda that actually tells you what that is without having to spend hours trying to find it? It just seems to me that this is, could be a lot more user-friendly and would not take a great effort to publish that. I'm sure that you all are not the ones who put it out, but to the powers that be that do, you want to have good turnout at the meetings. People have to know what it is that you're going to talk about. That's all. Thank you, and I do appreciate your service as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, I believe that is it until the zoning public hearings. Okay, council comments. Stacy, what you have?
Just want to thank everybody for being here. Thank everybody for their concerns and their thoughts. Thank Chief Moore for bringing his offices up here. That was great. I appreciate that, meeting the new offices and stuff like that. So we have a great town and hopefully keep moving forward what we do.
Yep, I want to thank everybody for being here and I want to tell you we've heard what you're saying. Also, wanted to thank Chief Moore and please pass our congratulations on to all those officers from all the council members. Also, wanted to mention that the Bedford Members' Center, Ken Parker and his wife went over to D-Day again and they actually made a plaque that's over there on one of the pillboxes, if I remember properly, of naming all the Bedford boys there. So I wanted to thank them for doing that, for remembering our community. And I just want to, again, thank everybody for being here and that's all I've got. Mayor.
Thank you. Jay?
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Appreciate all y'all coming out. Leslie, Ms. Cone, John, we appreciate everything you do for the park and for Christmas and taking care of that for us. Cindy, Ann, Bill, Officer Moore, we appreciate everything you do for the police department and getting us restocked back up for that. Also want to thank Leslie and Diane for everything they've been doing for the Vietnam Vets and for the memorial.
Again, thank you all for coming out. Appreciate all the input. Appreciate the chief bringing us folks up. Said the one young lady turned loose about two weeks ago. Yeah, two Sundays ago, I was letting a family member out of my car at church and when she exited the car, she locked the door. So for about 30 minutes, my car is outside the church and she was fine and she got the car and, you know, vehicle unlocked, so, you know, thank you for that service. We've had many discussions in this particular building about the apartments that used to be the middle school, that used to be the high school. And we had a tour that was open to the public, had two sessions last week. And, you know, if you go by the philosophy, the ends justifies the means, they did a wonderful job with those apartments. I was impressed with the, you know, how they was able to reuse the space that was once the auditorium, you know, just a really good job. Saturday, the council had a strategic planning meeting held at the library. And, you know, if you can come out of a government meeting or a business meeting and say, "That was a good meeting," you've done something. And I'd have to say that, you know, we identified a lot of areas that we need to address and we narrowed those down to two or three. And, you know, I think we've got some good direction. So appreciate the organizers of that. That's all I got.
Anyway, again, I'd echo what Vice Mayor Dyke said about, you know, about the apartments. But again, I want to thank everybody there, you know, for showing up and we do appreciate y'all's comments and we take it into consideration. And also have another thing here with, we had a town resident that turned 100 years old, Ms. Ada Eubank, and I got the privilege to attend her 100th birthday party and had a piece of cake and everybody was just all smiles up there, you know. And it's amazing that woman's still around at 100 years old. She was driving up to six months ago. A couple of times she scared me when I was in the road, I'm going to be honest with you. Get off the road. Anyway, but again, yeah, we take y'all's comments very, very seriously and thank y'all.
You scare me when you're in the road. Anyway, I'll echo again our thanks for showing up. It's a privilege to see everybody here and so thank you for coming out and voicing your opinion. Just a couple of things, obviously Halloween's coming up, so just be aware that there's going to be a lot of people and a lot of kids and sometimes a lot of grownups out there trick-or-treating. Our great democracy, we have election day coming up, so make sure you get out there and vote. And since we don't have another council meeting until the 18th of November, being a former Marine, I have to wish the Marine Corps a happy 155th birthday on November 10th. So, you know, happy birthday, Marine Corps and all the veterans out there. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I have a few things. Again, Chief, you've got a good bunch there. I always enjoy seeing new hires and new employees and they seem to be dedicated and want to be here in the town of Bedford. So again, keep up the good work. Keep them going. A few things I've been involved in since last meeting on October 15th, I attended a ribbon cutting at the YMCA for their new equipment and renovation there. If you've not been by there, go take a look. They had just bought new equipment, they knocked down a wall for more space, really looks nice. They've done a great job there. And again, as Darrell said, 1022, we went to the ribbon cutting for the Flora, the new apartment complex. Depending on when you were there, high school, middle school, or grade school, it is now an apartment complex. Looks really nice. The apartments, one-two bedroom, it rose from the ashes. I'm not going to get going on that, but I told a number of people, I walked through there shortly after the fire. And I told Dave McCormick, "That's the only time I really had some doubts. Could he really rebuild this?" He said, "I'm going to do it." And he did and he's done a fantastic job and my hat's off to that man. But he's, if you've not been by there, take a look. And I think by the end of this year or early next year, the hotel's supposed to be done. So he's a man on a mission. We did have a good work session on Saturday. I think we came away with some goals, some ideas, some visions, and we're going to put them into place and hopefully have a timeline to see them go and keep them moving. And I believe that is all I have. Report of council committees, I don't think we have any revisions to the agenda. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, we'd like to add to the consent agenda, a street closure request for the Bedford-Vietnam Veterans Memorial.
Okay. All right. Yeah. We'll put that as the second one. All right, public hearings, Mr. Warner.
Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by town council at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 28, 2025, in the council hall of the municipal building for the purpose of hearing a request for a zoning map amendment from medium-density residential R2 to general business B2 by Hope D. Metzger, located at 1333 Longwood Avenue on tax parcel 156A10T. Information has been on file in the Office of Planning and Community Development at 215 East Main Street. Anyone who is in favor of or opposed to the request shall now have an opportunity to express his or her views.
This public hearing is now open and I think we have two. I'll ask Hope Metzger to come on up.
Thank you very much for meeting with us this evening after just a time. First of all, I'd like to start off with saying that I would like to maybe discuss sponsoring the tree lighting that they request this evening. So if you'd like to get with me after that, I'd be interested in doing that. But you can send them my information. And so on the application that I submitted for the request to change from R2 to B2, I could, I would like to maybe have a different zoning, if that's possible, and not just request R2, because what I am now is an R2, which doesn't allow me to have an office. And I'm going to hand out this package and ask Samantha, who is my colleague at Magnum and Mountain, to help explain to you why it is so important to us to change the residential zoning that is current. And I'm going to share with you this GIS packet and if you'll just flip through it real quick, you'll see our legal description is commercial. And then to keep going, go ahead and explain again.
So, well, to preface that, so in R-two, you can't have an office building. It has to be R-three, and then that would be a conditional use, and that's in the packet. But I'll continue with my, what I think is just is, in the nineteen-sixties, a business opened, no kitchen, no bath, one half-bath, built as a business, operated as a business, never once a home. Then foreclosure hits, two years vacant, zoning defaults to R-two. Single-family, no offices, under conditional uses. Bedford still taxes this as a commercial property. The G.I.S. parcel code, I think that's what PC stands for, commercial, electric rate, commercial, trash truck, not a house. So then we have taxes and bills this as a business, yet zones it as a residential property. And Hope carries commercial insurance on this property. So if an act of God happened, it burned down, she could be denied her insurance claim, because if you read, and I might correct me if I'm wrong, during the current zoning, she could not rebuild an office. She would have to rebuild a residential property, which she couldn't even afford to do if she was denied the insurance claim. And, you know, I don't think this is, I know that there's a big thing, the spot zoning. I really don't think this is spot zoning. I think that you're just aligning the zoning with the historical, current, and best use of this property. And so I think that's all I have to say, but I really do think that the way it was built and designed, it's a nostalgic building. I think we should align the zoning with the taxation and bills that she has to pay and the cur- the commercial insurance, because that could be devastating.
And like the, the middle school that has been revitalized and brought value to our town, I have so, in addition, revitalized the Old Longwood Forest Building. That was a very in despair for closure building for years.
Oh, my other thought was, so this is how it's, so if you go, so R-three, the conditional use is, you can have an office. You can do limited professional district, you can have an office, or you can do B-one. You don't necessarily have to do B-two, because I understand that that, like, opens you up to a world of whatever. But, you know, if you go to R-three, professional, limited professional, or B-one, I think it aligns with what the taxation, the current use. And also for, who's gonna buy that building if she ever sold it as a residential property that can happen, if it's not a conditional use?
When I take part in my business in my town, and I work very hard to employ thirty employees, and I pay taxes, and I pay a commercial loan on this building, and that is my reflects. So I would appreciate for you to understand my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Sam, I suppose you've made your appearance, correct?
Yes.
You've already come up and spoke.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You don't want to come back again.
Yeah, that was it. That was my thought.
Okay. Thank you. All right, hearing. Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. All right, consent agenda, appointment of members is coming. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you come.
I apologize. Because of my age, I'm not hearing very well.
Oh, okay.
What's going on. And I'm not sure where you are on the agenda, but I came to talk about the property at one-three-three Longwood Avenue, but you put down lot numbers, and I did not bring my lot numbers. So I am out of order. I apologize. But I want to talk about the public hearing on the change in R-two to R, to B-two.
Oh, okay.
And if that's what you're talking about, that I'm in the right place. If not, I'll go back and sit down.
Yes. You're in the right place.
At the right time.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Well, thank you.
Could you state your name and where you live and?
Yes, thank you. I'm Carol Lacy, and I live at one-three-three-O Longwood Avenue, which puts me right across from the property that we're talking about this evening. I want to thank you for listening to us and giving us an opportunity to speak our concerns about this issue. My first concern is moving from R-two, which is residential, to B-two, which is business. Opens up a floodgate of possibilities of what this property could be used for. I went online and downloaded what is able to be used for a B-two property off of the website, and it is six pages of different types of businesses that would fall under B-two. So if you move it to B-two, it's just not one. It is six pages of different types of businesses that can occupy that spot. The second thing I want to say is, is that zoning does not go with the owner, but it goes with the lot. If the present owner states that there will be little changes to the property, and that they will protect the future, that does not protect the future of that property, because once it is sold, the new owner now has a B-two certification, and they can do whatever they want that falls under B-two. The third thing is, in my mind, this is spot zoning. The closest B-two building to this property is over two blocks away. It is the Dollar General Store on the same side of Longwood as this business is. The closest B-two building across the street is the Dairy Queen, which now has another name. And it seems to me, in looking at the zoning, which I used your whole website, which is Bedford.gov-Virginia interactive G.I.S., I got this information off of your own site today, that the dividing line between B-two and residential is Shady Knoll. I cannot find any B-two businesses coming toward Bedford past Shady Knoll. The Morgan Church, which is next door to this property, as does the Cardinal Nursing Home, which I live beside or in front of, and the Loma Baptist Church, all have an R-two designation. They are not designated as businesses. Longwood, Oakwood, Greenwood Cemetery is an R-one, not a B. It's an R. And the gas station on the corner of Oakwood and Longwood, which is just right across from the cemetery, is an R-one. Coming on toward town on Longwood, the Masonic Lodge is an R-one. And the lots all along Longwood coming in are R-two or R-one, all the way to the Bedford Middle School and the Ole Yeller. Even the gas station on the corner of Peaks and Bridge only has a B-one designation. Even Thorpe Funeral Home with this enormous parking lot has a B-one, Business One designation. B-one and B-two is very important as to whether you designated a B-one or B-two, if you even go down the business model. B-one is for neighborhood commercial services, for immediate needs of the residential area close to that business. B-two, which this is being asked for, is of high intensity business. It is to be located on arterial roads to serve a broader market region. Several years ago, this business wanted to display tiny homes, which are on trailers, for sailors' demonstrations in their parking lot. The neighbors in my area were concerned about the size of the parking lot, which is very small. But most importantly, we were concerned about the look of display of trailers being brought into the neighborhood. The request was turned down at that time by this body. In keeping with the organized growth and planning of and for Bedford, I would ask this body to turn down this request for spot zoning, which I understand, by looking on the internet, is either illegal or highly discouraged by the state of Virginia. But to allow the future growth of this area, it needs to progress in an organized, in a logical manner, not spot zoning. And I have one final thought. I live right across the street from this business. I do research on my computer every day, and my office site, I can look out my window right into their shop. And I enjoy watching the comings and the goings of this real estate business, how well they keep their premises, and how they decorate for the holidays. It's a joy to watch them. They are very friendly, and they are cordial whenever I go over. I am so glad that they are there, and I wish them the very best, and I hope that they will be my neighbor for a long time. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, consent agenda, appointment of members, economic.
Public speaker.
I closed it. Where was I? Appointment of members, Economic Development Authority. Mr. Warner?
Yes, Mayor Stanley, members of council, Mr. Jonathan Buttram and Ms. Michelle Crumpacker have expressed an interest in reappointment to the Economic Development Authority if reappointed by council. Vacancies have been advertised in the local newspaper, and no other citizens have volunteered to serve. Tonight, council has requested to reappoint Mr. Jonathan Buttram and Ms. Michelle Crumpacker to serve on the Economic Development Authority. Said terms to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
All right. Do we hear a motion? It's on move. Mr. Haley and Vice Mayor Updike. Any discussion?
I think they're two of the best ones that we could have on economic, other than the other people we have on now, so.
Anything else? I totally agree. They, these two have done a great job, and if they want to continue, I say more power to them. Keep up the good work. Roll call, Debra.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ebbele.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries on.
Close streets, Vietnam Memorial. Mr. Warner?
The Bedford Vietnam Veterans Memorial is requesting permission to hold a dedication ceremony in front of the county courthouse on Saturday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, from eleven o'clock A.M. to twelve o'clock P.M., and close the following streets. East Main Street between Bridge Street and South Street. They will notify the Fire Department, Police Department, and Bedford County Fire and Rescue of the street closing. Tonight, Town Council has requested to approve closing the above streets for the dedication ceremony as described, and I think Mr. Doug Berry would like to make a few comments about the event itself and also the nature of the request.
Going up, Mr. Berry, and tell us what's on your mind.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, I did want to speak just briefly to let you know that, one, we appreciate your continued support as we move through this. It has been a cooperative effort with the town, with the county. Mr. Warner's office has been nothing but supportive, and for that, I appreciate it. Just want to let you know that, yes, we're asking for, the ceremony time is from eleven to twelve. We're asking that the roads be closed from nine until one, giving, given the scope of what we are projecting. Honestly, I have no idea how many people will attend. At this point, we are more than thrilled at the response of the fourteen fallen family members. We have over seventy-five who've said they will be coming in from all over the United States. Our V.I.P., our R.S.V.P. count is nearly, is closing in on two-hundred at this point. We've requested more seats to be set up in front of the courthouse. As of today, we had forty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight hits on our memorial Facebook page, and that's in the last twenty-eight days. This is a very well-known event. I don't know how many people will come. I hope they all come. I know that that's a nightmare, and I hope they're all hungry for J. So I just wanted to paint a picture. I'd like to say we could close the roads at ten and then end promptly at noon, but I don't think that's a realistic expectation. I really feel that we need from nine o'clock until one o'clock, one, for preparation to set up. Secretary, just drew a blank.
Craig Crenshaw.
Secretary Crenshaw, who is the Secretary of Defense and Veterans Affairs from Richmond, is coming down as our keynote speaker. With that, we have also commitments from our federal senators, our U.S. senators, our state delegates. There will be an entourage. There will be quite a few people in town. Chief Moore has been read, he's well aware of what the crowd and the potential for crowd control might be. With that, I wanted to ratify, more so than anything, that we do have a commitment from the town to close the roads at nine and remain closed until one, to make sure that we can accommodate our guests into the town of Bedford for this ceremony.
I don't see a problem with that. Can you work for Public Works on that, Mr. Warner?
Absolutely. In fact, I would say if you would, someone would make a motion to close the street, East Main Street, from nine to one, if they happen to need a little bit more time than that, staff will certainly accommodate them.
Okay. Do you hear a motion?
My second.
Okay. Who made the first?
Oh, Darrell made it.
Vice Mayor Updike made the motion, and Councilman Foreman made the second. All right, Debra.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Ebbele.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries on.
Thank you very much. Subjected any questions you might have?
And, you know, I think it is good, and I agree. I've heard a lot of talk and chatter about this, and we do not know really how many people will show up. So you're right, it's, could be a large crowd.
Yes, sir.
I hope it is.
I share your excitement and your concerns at the same time.
We'll be there.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. All right. Okay, old business. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, the old business deals with, we'll discuss the last meeting amendment of Section two-dash-twenty-seven of Town Code, and the discussion is whether or not to change the meeting date, frequency, and time of council meetings. I will remind you that at the last meeting, this was tabled to the current meeting, and after conferring with the town attorney, if you wish to proceed, there will need to be a motion to take that from the table, and that will need to be passed first. Then you can do your thing, whatever you're gonna do with the question.
All right, say that again. Take- Take.
First, we need, first, we need a motion to take the matter from the table.
Okay. Do I, your motion for that, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, Councilman Foster. And who did the second? Councilman Eppelino. Okay, now roll call.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Eppelino.
Aye.
Mr. Updike.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries on.
Are we okay? Okay, now, we're good to go?
Well, there is, there is no motion before you at this point.
Do I have a motion of?
I'd make a motion that we have the meetings moved so we don't conflict with the county to the first and third Tuesday of the month, and I would make that effective after the first of the year.
Starting at seven?
Well, starting at six. What's on, I don't know what's on the ordinance now.
Six.
Okay. Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Foreman made the motion and Councilman Evans made the second. Discussion.
Okay, do you mind if I open the discussion?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
You go right here.
Thank you, sir.
So, the problem is, you know, we're going to go back to 6:00. If we did keep two meetings, I think we should stay at 7:00 like we should, like we have been doing it for years. Because if you go back to 6:00, some people might not be able to come to council meeting because they might not get off in time to make it. I think we need to amend the motion to make it to 7:00 if we're going to go that direction. But let me read.
Make a friendly motion. Amendment if you want.
Let me read the actual code, what it says next. Article 2, Town Council, Section 2.27, meeting. Regular meetings of the town council shall be held at the council hall in the municipal building on the second and fourth Tuesday each month in hours 7:00 p.m. But so changing the town code now, if we decide to go that, will ba, basically, we've been doing this for, if you go back and look at history, it's been going on for almost 75 to 100 years. We've been meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays. And my point, I pointed at last time, because the town, because the county made a decision on their part, we shouldn't have to make a decision because they made a poor decision on, didn't check before we and see that they had the meetings, so it wouldn't conflict with town or the citizens of the town or the county. My personal opinion, and I think we should stay the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month because they made the mistake, and like I was saying in the last meeting, they will have a new chairperson first of the year. Now, will they change the meeting back to the first and third, uh, second Mondays of the month? I can't say that and I can't guarantee that. But if you go to code of Virginia under section 15.2, 14, 16, or regular meeting, section B, days and times and places of regular meetings to be held during the ensuring the months shall be established at the first meeting, which the meeting may be referred to as the annual or the organizational meeting of the first of the year. So, you know, they might go back to it, I can't guarantee that, but we shouldn't have to change ours because they changed theirs. We should stay the same and just continue as what we've been doing for the last 75 to 100 years. Because I think it has got to, you know, a lot of y'all spoke on the one meeting, I would never agree to that because that's taking away from the citizens. That's actually taking away from the town by doing that, going to one meeting. We had our disagreement up here last council meeting. But my point is, we should just stay the same. It's like you said, is it going to matter? So go back to March, May of this year. Board of Supervisors had a meeting on Tuesday night, same night we had it. Do you think it affected us or affected them? No, it didn't. That's my opinion and that's what I think that we need to just, we had wasted so much time over one change of meeting, go to one meeting, go back to two meetings, go back this way. I think it has got to a point where we have, what, we got other things to do than sit here and try to please them because they done something that we really don't need to change because we didn't do it in the first place. That's my opinion. And if we do go to the first and third Monday of the month, we need to go back to 7:00, not no 6:00 because that's restricting to citizens. That's my opinion. And if we have to make a minute motion, I will make a minute motion.
The motion right now is that we move to the first and third Tuesdays, start at 7:00 p.m.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
I guess as a point, again, not to get you snarled the way you did last time. Mr. Harv can correct me. Mr. Foreman, since you made the amendment, if you would, are willing to move it to 7, I think you can do that without having to vote on it.
That's right. Okay, yeah, I'll move, I'll make the motion move to 7.
Okay, so you made the motion, you are amending your motion.
Amending my motion to the first and third.
At 7.
Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. First and third Tuesday at 7:00 p.m.
Gotcha. That is the motion before you now.
And that, we need another second?
No, no, you're, you're good. Actually, again, Robert Schur, the person who makes the motion can, based on comments, amend their own motion.
So now the motion is that we make first and third Tuesdays at 7:00 p.m.
That is what is before you.
Um, stays the same. But comments?
Yeah, I want to echo Councilman Haley's frustration over, while we're at this point But irrespective of the reasoning, we do need to make ourselves available to the, to the citizens and to the business owners of the town. So, you know, I feel like that we're going to have to move it first and third, you know, is certainly an alternative. You know, I certainly regret, you know, the reason that we're here and at this point, but, you know, that's, that's out of our control. We just have to go ahead and, you know, adjust our, adjust our way of doing things, you know, to be, to be accountable, to be accessible to, you know, to the citizens.
I echo what Darrell just said. We, I, the reason I made that motion is if we have it at the same time, we're going to have conflict where citizens have to choose which one they want to attend. So I want to make it, make all of our meetings available to any citizen that wants to attend both meetings.
Let me, if you have one more. At the last meeting, we did the proclamation for the 100-year-old World War II veteran.
That's right.
At the same time, that particular individual was, you know, across the street, you know, being recognized by the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, because we had meeting dates on the same time, you know, it sort of took away our opportunity to recognize the veteran as well. So, you know, that would be one instance where, you know, having the, the meetings at the same time, same date, you know, does sort of set us back a little bit.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
You know, I agree with you to a point, but, you know, I'm going to make a minute motion to keep it the same for the second and fourth Tuesday each month. That would be my minute motion to Todd's motion and then we can vote on it. So if we do vote on it this time, let's clarify what we voted on between the two motions.
Does he?
He can, he can propose it, just we have to get a second to vote on it.
As long as I get a second.
So that will come after we vote on the first?
If it gets us.
No, that'll change what you're voting on.
Yeah, he has to get a second before we can vote on it.
But I'll say.
That's right.
So you, so you basically have to vote to change what you will then vote on?
That's right.
Clear?
Not really.
So, there's been a second to amend the motion to keep it the same. You are now going to vote whether the motion should be amended.
Okay.
That's essentially what's being voted on.
And then, yeah, but that's, you're not making the final decision to do that.
All you will be doing right now, what you, what you do need to do, because there's been a second, is to vote as to whether the motion that's, that was on the, that was in front of the council before should be amended. And if it is amended, then you're voting on whether to adopt what was in that motion, which is to keep it the same. So we're not voting right now on whether to keep it the same, you're voting on whether to amend the motion.
Let me say one thing. I think we've all said this together. This is not about us. It is about making the citizens able to go to either or when they want to. If they want to go to the Board of Supervisors meeting, they can, and then they can come to the town council meeting. I don't know where John Barnhart is. I imagine he's at the Board of Supervisors meeting and he ought to be here or be able to be here if he wants to. And that's the conflict. It is not about town council. It is not about what we want to do or not want to do. And I do not know why the Board of Supervisors changed theirs. I don't really care. They did. They made that decision. They did not ask any of us, so that's, that's their business. But what we're trying to do is stop a conflict and make it available to whoever wants to follow county business and town business. That's all this is about. And yes, we want to keep it at two meetings a month. That's where we're going, just different days of the month is all we're doing here. And that's all I'm after, just make it available so everybody can attend either or or both when they want to, not having to choose. That's, to me, that's what it's about. So now we're going to vote on whether to change, to accept the motion?
Whether to amend, whether to amend the motion.
Okay.
To keep it the same. Correct. But if, but if that motion passes, then you would be voting on whether to keep it the same after that.
And if it fails, you're back to the original motion.
Correct. Exactly. If the motion to amend fails, you're back to the original motion for the first and Thursday.
We're basically voting on what Councilman Haley wanted.
Kind of.
We're voting to amend his, to accept his motion.
Yes, okay. That's what I want, okay. Everybody clear as well on that. Okay, good. Let's roll call, Deborah.
Mr. Haley.
So let me clarify, is it?
You are voting to amend the motion.
So does it mean yes is no and no is yes? So make sure we clarify that.
I'm glad you asked.
Yes is to keep your motion.
Yes is a vote to amend the motion.
I just want to make sure.
No, I'm glad you asked.
Clarify that because that means, that means it's backwards when you do it that way. Yes.
Mr. Eppelino.
Yes.
Mr. Updike.
No.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Foreman.
No.
Mr. Foster.
No.
Mr. Stanley.
No.
Our motion failed.
Now we're back to the original motion and everybody's clear on what we're voting for. Any further discussions? Okay.
It is for 7:00, right?
For 7:00.
Yes, for 7:00.
You okay, Jake?
Now, in January, we're going to switch, are we going to go to this again?
Probably not.
Original motion.
We'll do that if we want.
If it happens, it has to.
That's a lot of speculation.
Let's get through this year.
Just like.
First and third is 7:00. We already had a motion.
That is what they're, that is what is before them right now.
Are we good?
One and three at 7:00.
All right, Deborah.
That's the question.
When you're ready.
Mr. Eppelino.
Yep.
Mr. Updike.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Foreman.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
No.
Mayor Stanley.
Aye.
Motion carries six minutes.
Okay, new business, ordinance, rezoning map, change the tax map number 156-A-10T. Mr. Warner.
On September 4th, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to discuss a recommendation for a request to rezone property located at 1333 Longwood Avenue from R2 to B2. The property was previously Longwood Forest and is currently in office use for real estate sales and log home sales, which the commission recognized as illegal nonconforming use. This property was the subject of the same zoning map change request in May 2023. At the public hearing, the property owner spoke in favor of the request, no other citizens spoke. The applicant wished to change the zoning to increase the future sale value of the property for additional commercial purposes and to increase traffic to the site with retail sales. Commissioners expressed concerns without, with not knowing what specific commercial uses were requested and which of the more intense B2 uses could be permitted from those allowed in the ordinance. The discussion also involved concerns with changing the use solely for personal financial gain, commercial uses intruding on adjoining residential uses, negative effects to the community, and spot zoning. A motion to recommend denial of the zoning change request passed on a vote of seven to zero. Commissioners determined that this rezoning would constitute a spot zoning while confirming that the existing nonconforming office use could continue. Tonight, town council has requested to consider an ordinance to rezone tax parcel 156A-10T from R2 to B2 without proffered conditions.
You hear a motion?
Now, the motion would be to, be, to consider to rezone. Do you want to move to rezone or?
We probably should make, then make a motion to.
I mean, you can make a motion to rezone, but just understand that's what you would be acting on.
Probably want to accept or deny. Is that what we're?
Probably, to be clear about what you're voting on.
Yes, okay.
It's not as simple as we need a motion. It's, you need a motion to do one thing or another.
I was just on a roll here.
You could make a motion to deny, but it has to be a motion to do something.
Yes, I understand. All right, so we should probably talk about it first. Yeah. What do y'all think?
Do we have to, we have to have the motion first?
No.
So. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, now, discussion.
Partner, Mary, I had a question for you about procedure. They talked about moving it to R3 or B1. Would they have to go back through the, through the planning commission again and do that?
They would, since it was advertised for that zoning district.
Okay.
All right, all right, I'm done. So explain to me the difference between B1 and B2.
B2 is the general commercial and it's more intense commercial uses and B1 is your downtown zoning district in general, which has fewer intense uses.
So could she be a B1?
The request is for B2 and I believe the reason is because the closest commercial zoning district is B2, which is to the east of this, versus B1, which is much further to the west.
So she couldn't be a B1?
She, that could have been the request, but there's no B1 in the vicinity, so it's usually a proximity.
Excuse me. Hi, I didn't apply properly. I do believe, as I explained when I first met with you this evening, that B1 would have been maybe the better choice for this application. Or I agree. Or, or, and that's why I attached.
But we're voting on what the planning commission voted on, so that's, that's what we're voting on tonight.
I understand. So the answer to his question was yes, right? Could be a B1.
Had the request been for B1, that's what the hearing would have been for, the advertisement for the public.
So if we say no to R2, that doesn't mean she can't come back for B1?
She could request any other zoning district, yes, for a future application.
Is that an option for that business? Or is it not approved for that location, for that business?
The nonconforming use can continue. That's not a question of the existing business. It can remain as it is, but without changes or increase in intensity of uses.
Even though R2 does not list all this?
Nonconforming uses may. Nonconforming uses may continue as they are in the R2 zoning district.
I will say this, that is an unusual piece of property. And the, the owner of that original forest lived in the house, I believe, to the right. And that's who built that little secondary road there, from his house up to the forest. And now that it's, excuse me, been sold separately, that's why you got the fence there now, that he used that instead of trying to come out Belmont and go to his work. So it, that's, it goes, it's, it's a little history there, but I understand.
They also sold flowers there for almost 50 years.
Yeah.
It was business, and it always has benefits. And so I like to keep that note.
But anyway, we're...
That's what I bought a business. I have a commercial loan, I pay commercial electric, I pay business license, I pay business taxes, and I'm zoned R, so I feel like they're like, am I this or am I that?
Yes.
Because I'm not.
Yeah.
And I just want to, you know, I bought a business.
And...
GRS is commercial.
That's...
It doesn't matter, it's like, is it a business or...
Yes.
Is it residential? Because I do all business stuff, but it's R, so I think it's an incorrect zoning instead of a, I'm not really asking for a change except for a correction, not to be something that I'm not already, because I've already been long with florists slash real estate for, you know, I've been doing this for almost 10 years there, but it doesn't reflect what I do.
That's, that's a nonconforming...
So I'm not really asking for what I'm not doing.
That's a nonconforming...
I'm already doing it.
Well, yeah, and that's where your nonconforming part comes in. That's accepted. You're, you're okay, but what we're voting on tonight is R2 to B2. But I understand, I understand what you're saying.
I put the wrong number on there, so...
Yeah. But that's what we have to vote on tonight.
I get it.
Yeah. All right. What other questions?
I think we're, we're good.
You good? You good, Stacey?
Deborah?
So the, so the motion before you is to deny, just keep that in mind.
Yes.
It would be great if I could get some guidance and advice on what I'm asking for after the third time of applying and I pay hundreds of dollars to keep doing this over and over, and then I get here and I get a, oh, yeah, you didn't exactly do that right. So after asking and asking, I'm still asking for somebody to help me with this place. I've asked Mr. Warner, said there's no reason why I can't use this as a business to sell things. I had it, I put it in a package. We sold flowers there for 50 years. I don't want to make a gas station, I just want to use the building for what I bought it for.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I doubt you, our town, our neighbors, I love my neighbors.
It's whether of a future use she has, yes. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to defer to the zoning administrator on this, but I guess the question is more, what, what is there is okay and is fine, and that, of course, was the conversation I had with Ms. Metzger and I referred her to the zoning administrator. But I guess the question is, what is the future use that's affected? And that's what I would, again, I'll defer to the zoning administrator to clarify everything I say, but that would be the reason for the request. It's what is the future use that we're being asked to contemplate? And I'm not, I'm not sure we've heard that.
So, I, Mayor, I'd just call a question.
Yes. I mean, the action form pretty well explained it there, that what was discussed at the Planning Commission and what was, and you're in the nonconforming part, so you're okay there. You can continue doing what you're doing, but I'm, I'm going to stop this discussion and let's take a vote.
Mr. Updike?
Motion to deny.
Aye.
We're voting to deny them, yes.
Yes.
Aye.
You were voting to deny the...
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Epleyton?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries to deny the motion.
And I apologize, the town attorney and I were just talking about, the concern is about the ability to rebuild the nonconforming use. I think, I think there's some guidance we can offer.
Well, I, I think, and I, I just, I guess I want to clarify a term, and obviously, the zoning administrator can help out here, but it's legal nonconfor, we keep saying nonconforming. I know that the way, you know, people that don't deal with this all the time, it's a legal nonconforming use in that the, the use that's been going on there for years can still go on, and that, that's the legal nonconforming part. So even though the term is nonconforming, you know, all that means is it's not according to the current zoning ordinance, but, but the use that's been there can continue in perpetuity so long as it's not stopped for a period of time. So, you know, essentially, if, if the goal is to do what you've always done, you can do that.
Can I ask a question? So, you know, I understand they had a little closure for two years, right? So technically it wasn't abandoned, but wasn't there a vested interest that this property has actually been continued to use as something that sold products out of it?
So I, I think that's why it's, it's the legal nonconforming use, because it continues.
I guess it'd be kind of cute, because she can't sell tangible items out of the property. Not that that's a, you know, a thing for her, but let's say that whatever happened tomorrow, and she sold her building, she said, no one could, you can't have a tan salon or hair salon or anything right there, because you can't sell tangible items out of your property. But I think that, you know, if you cite the law about vested use, then, you know, it has been continuous for 50, you know, since 1962. I mean, I might, I would, I would let you...
So, so vested rights, essentially what you're talking about is you can't, you cannot have a more dense use, more intense use, because then you're unchanging, you're, you're going beyond what the, what the legal nonconforming use is. So essentially, once there's a two-year break in what's been going on, then that legal nonconforming use extinguishes. So right now, if, if what's been going on for the last nine years, or however, however much time, you cannot then increase the use, because then you're no longer following under the nonconforming, legal nonconforming basis on which you're currently operating.
So that is part of my argument, because for two years it was in foreclosure, but for 50 years before that, it was florist. And so now I can't sell right there, they pour to my block cabin people and use my building for that kind of thing. I know everybody gets in a tizzy about a gas station being there or something, but I, it's mine, you know, and I, I want to grow it and, and, and I want to make money in this business. I want to offer more things to the community. That's what business owners do, you know, I'm just, and if you don't say that...
Could this be a discussion we had at a later time?
Yeah.
I mean, she can come and talk to you all and get all this squared away and see what we can do and not do. Thank you. All right. This quarter, quarter 26, recovery from budget amendment.
As of September 15th, 2025, several recovery revenue items have been received in the various funds of the town. These recoveries are primarily from the town's insurance carrier, Virginia Risk Sharing Association, or VERSA. The items include recoveries for guardrail damage at Blue Ridge Avenue, a Bedford County contribution to fire department personal protective equipment, vehicle repairs in the police department, pole transformers damaged, the damaged light control box on Main Street, the sale of a tractor, and underground fees charged for development. The expenses related to these items have been or will be paid by the operating department. Staff is requesting a budget amendment to appropriate the revenue and expense of these items to the appropriate general ledger accounts as listed. Tonight, Town Council was requested to approve the attached budget amendment, which will appropriate budgets to the general ledger accounts related to the projects described.
Do I hear a motion? Tom Woodard. Councilman Haley and the second, Councilman Epleyto. Discussion or questions?
Are they going to ever get that thing off that ratchet strap?
What's that?
Are they going to ever get that thing off that ratchet strap?
So the materials to fix that should be here next week. However, the expertise to fix that exists outside the department. We have to bring in a contract.
That is one good ratchet strap.
It's amazing. It's a shame it's so old.
Good, good question. Anything else? Roll call. Roll call, Deborah.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Epleyton?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries on, Mr. Evans.
All right. Resolution, donation of surplus equipment.
Tom Woodard, our Public Works Director, is requesting permission to donate surplus equipment to a nonprofit organization. At this time, the department would like to donate a 2004 Ford Taurus vehicle, a 1995 Chevrolet S10 pickup, a 1995 GMC tractor, and a, hmm, it says 1020, but I don't think it's that old.
Let's just say an old Massey Ferguson tractor.
We'll, we'll contact the museum if it is.
And the intended recipient is a museum.
Oh.
Since you brought it up, Town Council is requested to adopt a resolution in support of donating surplus equipment to a nonprofit organization.
Maybe that's a number of what kind it is, but anyway, do you hear...
Sorry, that's...
Councilman Haley and Vice Mayor Updike. Any questions? All right, Deborah.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Epleyton?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries on, Mr. Evans.
Resolution changing the date of the first council meeting in November. Mr. Warner?
The first Town Council meeting in November, which is November 11th, falls on a town holiday. Therefore, Town Council is requested to adopt a resolution to move the council meeting on November 11th, 2025, to November 18th, 2025.
Do I hear a motion?
Yep.
Councilman Epleyto and a second.
I have a second.
Councilman Evans, any discussions on that one?
Only discussion I have was...
In a week, I'm not going to be here.
Only discussion I have, so we change it, a meeting in November, December meeting will still be the second Tuesday, and then going into first year will start in December, correct?
Well, you've got to deal with the December meeting here, and the other meetings in a second. That's the next item after you.
Okay.
But, but yes, that is what's unprecedented.
Okay, just want to make sure.
This is not the change you passed earlier. This is specific to the November holidays.
Just want to clarify.
Thank you.
All right, everybody okay with it? Deborah?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Epleyton?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries on, Mr. Evans.
Resolution canceling second council meetings in November and December.
The second Town Council meeting in November and also the one in December fall during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday seasons respectively. Tonight, Town Council is requested to adopt a resolution canceling the second council meeting in November, which is scheduled for November 25th, and also the second council meeting in December, which is currently scheduled for December 23rd.
All right. Do I hear a motion? So I move. Councilman Haley, second.
Yeah.
Councilman Evans. Roll call. Deborah?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Epleyton?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Motion carries on, Mr. Evans.
I believe that is all the business before, before this council tonight, so I will adjourn this meeting to November 18th, 2025, at 7:00 P.M. No, 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 excuse me. 6:00 P.M. for a review of the audit report.
The work session pertains to the regular meeting.
You're right.
6:00 o'clock, work session.
6:00 P.M., November 18th. Y'all got that, guys? This meeting is...